Okay, today is August 19, 2019. Welcome to Millbrae Planning Commission meeting. And for those who are able, please rise and join me at the Platoon of Allegiance.
Platoon of Allegiance to the plan of the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please? Present. We don't have any agendas reviewed tonight, and we don't have any meeting minutes either. Is that correct? Oh, sorry.
We have to see if there's an agenda review.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Want to make any changes, right.
Right. Agenda review, sorry. Anybody want to propose anything at all?
Yeah, maybe. It looks like we're going to continue a couple of items, probably.
Yes.
In case there's anybody left in the room who was interested in those, maybe they'd like to leave first, if we're going to actually do that.
You want to make a motion?
New business. Move to move number seven in front of number six.
I second. I think we need, Benedict, can we get the board?
There you go.
Okay, so I have the number seven A and seven B goes before number six. Meeting minutes, seeing none. Public communication, this is the time reserved for persons wishing to comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. And for those who would like to speak, please follow a speaker slip. And public communication is limited to no more than 30 minutes. Each speaker could be given no more than three minutes. Anybody wish to speak on anything that is in the purview of Planning Commission that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll close that. So item number seven A, 210 Vallejo Drive.
Through the chair. So for both the public hearing items this evening, both the 210 Vallejo Drive and the 375 La Prinda, staff is recommending that we continue those two items to a date uncertain at this point. We will be reaching out to the commission to see if there is any level of availability for perhaps a special meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is on Labor Day, so that one has been canceled. And so I will reach out here this week to see if there's any availability. Otherwise, we'll be meeting that second meeting in September. So it's likely that those two projects will be coming back at that time. Just quickly, if you recall with 210 Vallejo, that was a new home that the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval. And it was pulled up to the city council, and council has remanded it back to the Planning Commission for further review. And city had a community meeting with the architect and the surrounding neighbors, and we're working out some finer details, so that is going to be ready very shortly, within probably the next week. La Prinda also is a new case that needed some further analysis, so that will be coming to you very shortly as well. So that is why we're recommending continuation of those two items this evening.
Very well. But before we go on, so I think their next meeting is September 2nd being Labor Day. Do we not have a meeting the following Tuesday, or are we?
So one option would be to have a special meeting, perhaps on the 3rd, which is the day after Labor Day if commissioners were available, and we could have that time slot available for these two cases to come forward, as long as we're ready to go. I think we will be. So that's one option, and I can pull the commission separately tomorrow to find out and solidify that date. Otherwise, if we go to the following week, we're starting to be about a week away from when we would meet on the 16th regularly. So I can pull the commission tomorrow to find out offline, and then we can go from there.
Sounds good. I should be available on September 3rd, just so everybody knows. But you can certainly pull the commission for availability.
I'm waiting.
Vice Chair's okay?
Yes.
Okay, so you got four.
So I'll reach out tomorrow and make sure we lock that down.
Okay, thank you. So motion to continue both item seven A, 210 Vallejo, as well as seven B, 375 La Prinda.
I second it.
Votes, please. Item seven A and seven B has been continued to a date uncertain. So now we move on to item number six, new business, on the discussion item on accessory dwelling unit ordinance discussion.
Through the chair. Just want to make a quick, a couple of quick comments before we get into this. First, I just am very pleased to bring this item to the commission this evening. I know this is something that we've been having a lot of conversations about. This also, Millbrae represents really the only city in San Mateo County that does not have our own tailor-made accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Of course, we've been authorizing them subject to what the state law authorizes, but we have heard from both council and commission that Millbrae needs a more tailor-made ordinance for our city. And so I just really wanted to just quickly highlight the work of our staff, our Housing and Economic Development Manager, Elisa Tierney, Linda Roberson, Jennifer Lim, and also Nestor Guevara. Our staff worked very collaboratively between the planning division and housing, and so we're really pleased to give you our presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for the hard work. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Elisa Tierney with the City of Millbrae. I am here tonight to present some information on accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. What we would like to do, Linda will be speaking in a few minutes, and together, we would like to introduce the concept of what qualifies as an accessory dwelling unit, and provide some background for it. And we'd like to review land use and zoning issues that are coming up as a result of these new ADUs, and then, of course, seek commission feedback to get a sense of what is appropriate here in Millbrae, and then discuss next steps. So tonight's presentation is really a focus for you all, it's a focus on the land use and zoning questions. And it's important to point out what it's not. There's sometimes some confusion. We, as staff, entertain with members of the public. Accessory dwelling units are not short-term rentals, nor is it, although it can be under certain circumstances, nor is it affordable housing. So this is not a discussion of inclusionary or affordable housing. So here's the definition. This is pretty much a legal definition of what an ADU is. It's an attached or detached residential dwelling unit. And the kicker is providing complete independent living facilities, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation, situated on the same property as a primary that is bigger, single-family dwelling unit. The law is pretty clear on that. Other names you've probably heard, second units, in-law units, granny units, I'm sure there are others. So we are here, the Bay Area is here, and I guess many other states in this position because of the lack of housing production with respect to the demand. We just, over the last 20 years, have not at all, in California, especially the Bay Area, kept up with the necessary requirements of housing. And that pent-up demand, combined, coupled with a strong economy, has led to unprecedented increases in housing costs and our current housing crisis. I meant to bring, and I didn't, the area median income every year, it's published by the state for each county in California. We are the most expensive county, and that was, has never been, I mean, historically has not been the case. I will make sure we get that information for you, because I think it warrants attention. This year, I think the increase was 26% over last year, which is outrageous. It's never happened before. So new housing, as a result of the housing crisis, there are various housing solutions that are coming up, we see, and ADUs is one example of new kinds of alternative housing that are popping up to help resolve this crisis. And as a result of ADUs coming to the forefront, a lot of state law has recently changed, as you know, to make it easier for property owners to build them. So the benefits, one of the key things that ADUs offer to communities is the idea that it, it's already on land, you don't have to purchase the land. So it has an incredible saving, both in terms of its size, so it's a smaller structure, so it's going to be less, it's going to be more affordable that way. And then also, you're not paying for land. So it really is, it responds well to the typical barriers of land and affordability and constraints relating to that, and environmental quality, because it requires a simple ministerial permit, which we'll talk about in a minute. It provides a source of income for homeowners that is new, potentially. It's a way to, for some of those who need additional income can stay in their homes. It's a possibility that many had not anticipated, so that is helpful. And it presents opportunities also for extended families to be together, or in close proximity, and for homeowners to age in place. And finally, it creates the much-needed new housing, adding to the housing stock. So before discussing land use issues, which is when I'll turn it over to Linda, and seeking policy direction from you, we wanted to make clear that the state is also mandating certain aspects of this. So they, so they're letting the communities decide, the cities decide, some aspects, but holding the reins fairly tight on others. So for example, the ADUs must be allowed in all residentially zoned areas. For us, that means R1, R2, and R3. The state says that they can be as big as 1,200 square feet, or 50% of the floor area of the primary dwelling. There is some latitude for communities to decrease that size, and that's one of the things that'll be discussed with you. This is, these are by right, these are ministerial review only, ADUs. That is to say, it does not come before you, it does not come to the Planning Commission, and does not require approval. And parking is a little complicated. Basically, the law says that at the very most, it can be one additional unit per, one additional space per unit, but that cannot be required within half a mile of transit, in historic areas of the city, or if it's an attached ADU. So under those circumstance, no additional parking is required. Linda, I will turn it over to you.
Just so it's clear, so it's basically saying, if it is, the only requirement that can be added for parking would be a detached ADU that is more than half a mile away from transit.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, unless, there are certain findings in the law, unless it has severe impact on the city and can be found to be such, but that's not unlikely.
And the definition of transit?
Yeah, that's another good question. It's, do you want to try this one? I mean, it's basically, for a bus route that has buses at the peak hours, so the rush hours, no greater than 15 minutes apart. And there are some other ones. But so basically, for us, that means, it means just El Camino. Oh, and Millbrae, that portion down over the.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So I want to start, we'll just take a quick glance at these first state mandates, and then we'll probably come back to them once we get into the discussion. What I'd like to do is go through some of these questions that will come up, and again, we'll revisit these once I finish the slide presentation. Some questions are to limit possibly use maximums of 1,200 square feet, or impose tighter limits for the square footage and size of what we're currently using. Another policy question is.
Sorry, I may stop you for one second. Earlier, you said something about half a mile from transit. So anything half a mile from El Camino Real cannot require a parking?
That's correct.
How far does that get up to? From our maps, you know, from a city's perspective? Sorry about that, Linda.
Sorry, I'm not working here. On the stand.
There you go.
We're going to have to get back to you on that. I actually didn't do it. We can create a map that shows how far up, and we can get that to you as well.
That's pretty far up the hill.
Almost to all.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
The second question would be to look at the heights and second-story units. Should the height limits be imposed? Should we, should second-story ADUs be limited to attached units only? And can height limits reduce the privacy and shadow concerns of neighbors? Another question that has come up is, are backyard open spaces flexible? Should the current requirement of 1,000 square feet of open space be relaxed to accommodate more housing? And then finally, the lot coverage and floor area ratio. Should exceptions to current lot coverage and FAR limits be limited, or be allowed to accommodate detached ADUs? So as Director Meisner mentioned earlier, we've had a couple of years to start looking at these, and to actually kind of experience what we're seeing coming in from applicants, and to make some observations of what we've seen. So staff in the last couple of years has noticed that there are an increase in number of applications that are proposing the following. We've seen an increase in second-floor setback exception request, conversion, requests for conversion of existing garages, sites that would exceed the FAR, issues around legalizing existing units. There have been people that are inquiring about second-floor additions. Lots of questions about loft style and vaulted ceilings. Again, this is the height issue that we've come back to. Impacts to neighbor privacy and increased density issues. And then, applications that come in as part of, that are combined applications, so ADUs and additions or major renovations. So how those get processed through our department has kind of become a speed bump for us. Again, all of these ideas are recent observations that I believe that the proposed ADU ordinance will be addressing. Again, the proposed ADU ordinance is an opportunity to effectively address these potential issues, both through design and policy. Staff has prepared three straw scenarios to prompt discussion with the commissioners in an effort to learn how best to address potential impacts and to illustrate some areas of conflict. So what you're going to see next are three of our scenarios. Scenario one looks at a single-family residence and a detached ADU on an R1 interior lot. So this first scenario shows a very typical 5,000-square-foot interior lot with an existing single-family residence. The setbacks shown are five feet on the sides and 10 feet on the rear. The proposed detached ADU is set 10 feet away from the rear property line and assumes that there is no easement. This is a very common condition in Millbrae. Over the past two years, staff has observed that applicants generally conform to the state guidelines, which is what we're following. However, there are some uncertainties when interpreting local zoning code and the state guidelines. So what we've seen here are some key considerations that we wanted to address, and those, we'll tie back to those first four questions that we talked about earlier. First is the floor area. Staff would recommend that the, that the ADU should be appropriate for the lot size. So if we can build in some flexibility around perhaps extending an ADU in the rear, if it's a larger lot, perhaps it makes sense to have a larger ADU. Again, the lot size of 5,000 square feet is pretty small, so there's not a whole lot of room to put in a 1,200-square-foot ADU. So it doesn't make sense to allow that or encourage that when something much smaller would create less conflict. Another idea or issue that we're looking at is height. We need to have flexibility, particularly in conjunction with the setbacks. So if you consider reducing the square footage or the footprint of an ADU, then the height with that setback could be restricted to a single story. A lot of these issues are tied together. For example, so you, in a situation where you, we have a 1,200-square-foot allowance, you can do a second floor. So you'd have the square footage, but the impacts that that would have on the neighbor with the visibility, the views, privacy, it creates another issue. So I think if we can limit that to a single story, then maybe we can have flexibility with the setback. For example, maybe encroach into the rear setback by an additional five feet. I believe there are other counties and other cities in the peninsula that are doing this. It looks like something that is a possibility, and so we'd like to study that a little more and open that up for discussion. Again, setbacks, it's a major consideration on smaller lots, again, regarding views, privacy, and noise. And then the lot coverage. A 5,000-square-foot lot is a tenth of an acre, so there's not a whole lot of space. The majority of the housing stock in Millbrae is around 5,000, between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet. Anything over 10,000 square feet is considered a large lot, so they have a little less coverage. You can only build up to 40% coverage on a large lot, whereas on a smaller lot, you have up to 50% coverage. For all of the R1 districts, you have up to 55% FAR. So looking at scenario two, oh, before I move on, I wanted to kind of point out to some design considerations. We can see with the first example what a detached unit is. This graphic is exceptional, it's being used all over the place, but it shows really clearly that this white house is the main primary house, and the blue house is the proposed ADU. There is a separation that you must maintain of 10 feet, and that's for fire and safety issues. But the size of the AD unit is still flexible for jurisdictions. This shows that the detached ADU does not share a wall with the main house, and it can be of any design at this, at this point, as long as it's under 1,200, 1,200 square feet is the maximum. This image shows a very good. This image shows a very good example of how, how the two units work together. They are a different color, one is larger, one is smaller, but with a design aesthetic that has a very similar vocabulary. So this is a very nice example of how those can, can work together while increasing the density of the lot. This example shows quite the opposite. It shows an example that is of more of a traditional kind of rambling style, and then the ADU is a more modern style. This is something that we, again, want to discuss and consider in the design guidelines. You have a dramatic change in the roof type. Is that something that we want to see in Millbrae? Do we want to have flexibility? Do we want to allow residents to have free rein in the design? If not, then we should probably look at some guidelines. Okay, so the second scenario, we wanted to get kind of a good cross-section of what we're dealing with here in Millbrae. A single-family residence with an attached ADU on an R1 single-family corner lot, and this is zoned large lot. So the, the second scenario shows an existing two-story, single-family residence with an attached ADU on a corner large lot. This is 10,000 square feet or larger. The diagram shows side setbacks of 10 feet and five feet, and 10 feet for the rear setback. The ADU is an attached, single-story unit. Key considerations with this diagram are very similar to the first one, if not exactly the same. We have a floor area of 55 square feet. A larger lot may accommodate a larger square foot ADU. The height would be a second story unit would be, or, the height issues point out that a second story unit would be subject to the second floor stepback requirements. So as you can see, if you're looking at the ground floor setback, if you want to put in a first floor, then there's no, you only have to abide by the ground floor setbacks. If you go up a second floor, then you'll have to start imposing this, this second floor stepback. And we're using a stepback terminology to kind of differentiate from the ground floor setback and the second floor stepback. And the second floor, again, is determined by the ground floor exterior wall. So that kind of limits the design and the square footage that an ADU might have if you're looking at a second floor. We'll skip through to the setbacks. So larger lots may require more attention to massing and scale, so we would have to look at the design aesthetic a little bit closer with the larger lot. It's more significant, more substantial. We want to make sure that whatever happens, that we have the setback on the side, which is clear for vehicle access and visibility. Pointing out that horizontal additions may require more flexibility with the setbacks and lot coverage. And these are examples of an attached ADU. This top example is a good example of what we can see. The only thing that connect, that makes this an attached unit is this breezeway. So it doesn't, there's no restrictions on the fact that it has to share a wall to be considered an attached ADU. It can just have a breezeway, and the fact that they're connected, even though there's no livable space underneath it, still, it's still considered an attached ADU. This lower image shows how a, a two-story structure can attach to a single floor ADU if it's well-designed. So the third scenario is a single-family residence with an attached ADU on an R2 interior lot. We're seeing some of this. Millbrae doesn't have a whole lot of R2 residential units, but we do think that this is actually an ideal situation. The third scenario shows a single-family residence with an attached ADU on an R2 interior lot. It's a rare condition in Millbrae, given the smaller number of lots zoned for duplex residential. It's an ideal condition for constructing an ADU, given the larger FAR allowance, and no setback requirement for the second floor. So again, you only have 55% FAR requirements on a single-family unit. This is an R2, so you have 88% FAR. The setbacks, there's no second floor stepback that we need to abide by, so that gives you a little bit more flexibility. This top image kind of shows how that stepback works versus this lower image, which has no second floor stepback. So that gives a lot of flexibility to the homeowner, and I think a majority of, certainly contractors around the area would like to see this disappear, but right now it does help us manage the bulk and massing of the structure. So some of the key, key issues with this are the floor area, the setbacks, and the lot coverage.
Sorry, before you go further on that slide, I got a questions regarding this. This proposal, this, this little example here describes an ADU addition to an existing single-family home on an R2-zoned lot.
Correct.
You mentioned the FAR being increased from 55 to 80, is it 88%?
88%.
Now, since you're adding only an ADU, not necessarily a second full-on unit, does that change the requirement between 55 to 88?
No, for all R2, if I understand the question, all R2 lots are zoned with 88% FAR.
Whether you build a single-family or two-unit building?
Correct. Just because you're zoned R2 does not necessitate that you have to put two units on it.
Understand, but if you only build one unit, you still can build up to 88% of the FAR?
Correct.
That's not my understanding.
Are you, so we can verify, but are you, are you suggesting that it's, your understanding that in an R2 zone, if it's only a single-family, you must build to the R1 standards? Okay.
That's my understanding as well.
I'll have to double-check that, because that would be news to me, so I'll look into that.
I also understood that we had gone up to the 88 because, well, now I'm thinking back, because it was an R2, and they had to get two units in there. And at one point, there was no FAR at all, and I think that's when we went to the 88, because they were building two units on that R2 lot. But I didn't understand at any time that if it was a single-family dwelling, then it would abide by the single fam- okay.
Well, even better that we're having the discussion this evening. We'll definitely verify that-
Yeah.
-as we move forward, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to point out too, with the R2 zoning designation, you, you have to provide two parking spaces per unit. So I believe since we include the FAR of the parking space, that that allows, that bumps up the FAR a bit to accommodate that parking space.
Right, so by the same token, if you're only building a single-family with only one unit-
Correct.
-then you only require two covered parking-
Correct.
-instead of four, had you built two units. And therefore, instead of, you know, instead of giving them 88% FAR, you were only given 55 on a single-family construction on an R2 zone. That's my primary understanding, unless it's proven wrong, but you can look into that.
And we were always, I understood that you were on an R2, so you could build two units, but you basically had to have two-car garage for each unit.
Correct, yes.
So far, these R2 and R3 lot designations, then are we talking about that the ADU could be built whether there's either a single residence, or whether there's two or three residences, you could still have an ADU on a R3 with three?
Correct, as long as you're within the FAR and all of the zoning criteria are met. So the next slide is just a quick example of a junior ADU. This is one that we don't see as often, but again, are out there. This is an ADU that already exists in a house. You're not adding square footage, you're not doing any expansion of the square footage or footprint of the building, but it's something that already exists under the, the roof or as a basement. You're just creating a bedroom within an existing house. So this is just a quick example of what that might look like. You don't have a full kitchen, you have plug-in appliances, so the state does have some restrictions about kitchens, as, as we do with the R2. Every single-family house is only allowed one full kitchen, and that's how we distinguish, or at least building distinguishes, whether a, a house is a single-family or a duplex, is the number of kitchens. And then the final slide that I have is just to kind of wrap up and showing a graphic, these again are great graphics courtesy of the County of Santa Cruz. To reiterate, some of the considerations that we need clarification on and discussion about are the floor area, consider the maximum area that's appropriate for the lot size, the height, consider restricting the height to one story, allow flexibility for the rear setback, and lot coverage, allow some flexibility for increased density where it's appropriate. And then I'll toss it back to Alisa. Thank you.
So, staff is here tonight to get your feedback, solicit your thoughts and guidance on where to go, and what specifically you would like to see for our ADU ordinance here in Millbrae. And then, I think we put a flyer on your, in your station about upcoming community outreach meetings that we would like to hold, and we plan very end of August and into about mid-September, have them just repeating. So it would be the same meeting, once you go to one, you've, it's, it's, they don't build on each other, so they'd be individual, but different times of day, weekends, et cetera, to catch as many residents as we can. So those are scheduled into September. And then, with information we receive tonight, hopefully from you, and what we receive in the way of community feedback and kind of direction, sort of, hopefully we can gather a consensus from the community in terms of what the key issues are as well, and then bring it back to the city council for an informational interview before we begin the formal process of bringing it back to you for the draft ordinance, which would be in the fall, and then culminating in the formal review and completion in early winter. So that's, that. So basically, just to summarize, we're here, we'd like to suggest you conduct the study session, provide guidance to staff on the key land use policies that Lynda has delineated, and, and then move forward, and staff is here, is available for questions. Thank you.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions for the staff at this point?
Like, specific questions, or are we just going to go into discussion like now?
Yes, specific questions first, and I'd like to open up for public comments.
Oh, no, that's fine, go ahead.
Anybody? Actually, I do have one question. As far as the ADU goes, between the ADU and the main living quarters, are they subject to the same fire requirement, like fire separations, as if this is a completely different unit?
Yes.
So one-hour fire rated?
Yes.
That sort of thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, very well. If no other, if no other questions for the staff at this point, does anybody in the public wish to speak on behalf of this topic? I would need a speaker slip, but I don't currently have one. Go ahead and get a speaker slip. Perhaps you can fill it out after me, if you can just, you got, you got three minutes?
Yeah, thanks. Probably just need half a minute. But I'm glad to, to see the email that we're approaching this subject. I think I approached this staff a couple of years ago, when it was starting to be a very sensitive item, and a popular item. And from my online research, based on my research, a lot of articles and updates with even the county and Redwood City about the potentials and positive results of this process. I actually inquired about it with staff, and I'm glad I'm hearing a lot more specific examples to help me gauge and so predict on how I could contribute to this sort of area. Because, yeah, I'm an engineer, but sometimes I don't want to play architect, maybe like some of you guys experienced, and I want a basic design of how I could sort of contribute and go through this process. But I'm glad, it looks like we're in the basics, steps of approaching and confirming some of these basic, maybe, design thoughts, and in layman terms, how we could satisfy and, and have a decent product to meet these criterias. So I'm glad this is, yeah, the start of something more specific, so, so the public knows how they could maybe possibly participate in this process.
Excuse me, did I catch your name, your name?
Yes, Tim Chan.
Tim Chan, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chan, for your comments. Anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this topic of ADU? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Commissioner comments? Anybody would like to start?
Lynda, was one of your slides, like, the possible questions we could, or topics we might be discussing, was on one slide, or like, five?
Five. Okay, that won't help then. Because you could keep us in little buckets, maybe.
Through the chair.
Yes.
One thing I could, I could just mention that might help guide the conversation, is, so just, just the way that the staff report is flowing, beginning on page three, so we have the different categories, parking, size limits, setbacks, open space, lot coverage, FAR, the architectural neighborhood character, and then height limits.
Okay.
So that, that might be something that could just help.
Okay. Where do you want to start?
I have to ask a couple.
Who wish to begin?
Okay, I, I just want to-
Vice Chair Whip?
Yeah, I wanted to thank staff for getting this ball rolling. I'm kind of sorry to hear you're thinking that it's going to take that long to get it all ready. So maybe if we concentrate, we can get it started, finish it up a little bit faster. I'm looking at that list of cities, and we are the only city that hasn't come up with anything, and that's kind of a little embarrassing. So I think that it would really behoove us to get on the bandwagon. In the meantime, we've allowed 47 at the state, and I think we may want to make some changes to some of those state regulations. So I'm glad we're started, and I'm hoping that we get it done quickly. On that note, one of the issues that has bothered me somewhat is the, the parking issue that I think we might start with, and Millbrae has some pretty narrow streets. Actually, we don't even park out in the street if we can help it, because if you have two cars parked, it's difficult, and if you get somebody coming up and down the street, you have to kind of squish into somebody's garage to let somebody else come down. So I think we have a very unique situation, and especially if we can't do anything the first half a mile to El Camino, we certainly have a lot of reasons for safety that we require the maximum that we possibly could with the ADUs, because of the safety issue. I mean, these cars have to go someplace, and if they're all on the street, then it's a safety hazard, so- So I think that's a real important issue that we really concentrate on the parking. A lot of the issues are quite good, and I think we need to move forward on, but I'd like to see what else, somebody else thinks about parking, because I think that, well, I think that's the first thing that is on here to discuss. Actually, that first sentence on the staff report seemed a little difficult for me, because it says, "As provided in government code, the state significantly limits the authority of local jurisdictions when it comes to requiring additional parking." So, meaning we don't have a lot of leeway on it. However, the state requires that no more than one additional space may be required of an ADU. So that's really saying that we could do one. Is that right?
So we're able to provide for one space when it's outside of the half-mile radius from a high-quality transit stop, right? One point I did want to make, because we started to do some research with HCD Housing at the state level, and talking also a little bit locally about, are there any other bills that perhaps are, you know, the legislation is always changing as it relates to these ADUs. And we do know that other jurisdictions have parking issues as we do. We are predominantly a residential community, and so the impact of having the second dwelling units can lead to more parking and more parking on the street. So we are just scanning the scene to see if there's going to be any ability for staff to look at that further. As it stands now, the way the state law is written, the maximum we can require is one parking space, but that is something that we'll continue to monitor to see if, and, you know, if that's the commission's direction to us, we'll look into it further.
And someplace in here, it said you almost couldn't do any. At some point, I read something like that. So there was some contradiction, but at least one for an ADU would be fantastic. Yeah, and then I have some issues on some of the other things, but maybe we should just stop, do parking at one time.
Well, if you have other comments about other aspects of this ADU ordinance, perhaps you can also bring that up. I suppose we have a lot of things to go through in terms of just, not just parking, but as well as size, setbacks, and open space, that sort of thing. If you have other comments, I would encourage you to.
Okay. And it depends on how you want to do it. Should we maybe all put our input on parking, then that way it's kind of concise? Or do you want us all over the map?
I like subject by subject.
Okay.
You like what?
Subject by subject? Okay, so let's talk about parking then. Mr. Commissioner Wong?
Okay, so I'm trying to tie in some of the concerns for unique to Millbrae, and obviously Catherine pointed out one is the parking issue. I'm thinking that one of the prerequisites for having ADU might be to have an existing primary residence to be conforming to code. If it doesn't conform to code, if it doesn't meet setback requirements, if it has variances, then these issues of having an ADU should be looked at or scrutinized more carefully or not, just automatically granted. Because the issue about the setbacks in the parking is that there's required to be a front yard setback, and if they meet inadequate front yard setback and an existing garage, you know, two-unit, two-covered garages, right, for a three-bedroom house, then, and it has the front yard setback, then that would allow for driveway parking also. So you'd have driveway parking and two-car garage. If the house is non-conforming, it doesn't have that front yard setback, there may be no parking in the front yard, or there may be only one garage. So that would severely limit the ability to have additional units. Like, we saw one remodel, eight, the person added an ADU, and they had seven bedrooms and one car garage. So that would be a non-conforming, existing primary structure that we would have to really consider if we allow an ADU or not. So that's, for example, why it would require, if we, the primary home meets existing code, then it's, you know, more minimal to have an ADU. But if it does not, then, you know, maybe that would be a consideration for having an ADU granted, in terms of parking. And then not only the front yard for parking, but also if the ADU is eating up a lot of the backyard, and if we allow them to reduce the setbacks for the backyard in the 1,000-square-foot requirement, we want to make sure that they have a lot of greenery in the front, because that open space may make up for the loss of 1,000 square foot and the setbacks taken up in the backyard also. And then it also allows to maintain the character of the neighborhood by having the front yard setback. Also, if they maintain the existing current code for these front yard setbacks, I think that might alleviate a lot of overcongestion in the parking issue. That's my two cents.
Through chairs, I want to make one point. So this, great suggestions, and I don't want to stifle any conversation tonight at all, and I won't do that. But, so as you give us things to look at policy-wise, we might get cut off at the knees by what the state allows, but what we will do is, we'll certainly, I like that suggestion about, you know, enhancing the front yard if we allow for certain things in the backyard. But to the extent that the state's not going to allow us, we'll go back and look at that again, because I think, you know, the state law kind of has this one-size-fits-all sort of approach, and we're trying to do what's really unique for Millbrae. And if there's a way for us to kind of inquire or find out if there's something that we can do that makes our ordinance even more unique to our community, then we'll keep doing that. So feel free, and thank you.
That brings up kind of another question in my mind, kind of unrelated, but did I read something today in all of this that the ADU can't be more than 50% of the size of the existing structure?
Right.
So in Millbrae, where we have a lot of homes that are 1,000-square-foot homes, two-bedroom, one-bath, an ADU basically can't be more than 500 square feet just because of that one little rule or something?
Right, that's correct. Right. So in any situation, it can never be more than 50% of the primary structure, or up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet, whichever is less essentially, so.
Right.
There are two independent clauses, right?
Somebody has a 3,000-square-foot house, and they want to, they can go up to 1,200.
Correct, but not 1,500.
Exactly.
Exactly, yes.
When we do an approval for, say, an ADU, do we basically look at the house at all? The existing house, like how many bathrooms, and, or nothing?
Staff does review that. We don't limit the number of bedrooms in a house, but we do, we are limited to ministerial review. So the commission will not be able to review the projects that come in for ADUs. But staff does look at the organization of the house. We are very upfront with the applicants in asking them, is this an ADU? Is that your goal to provide an ADU? And then we work them through the benefits of that. The staff and the city, I think, really does see this as a huge benefit to Millbrae in terms of creating very unique environments within each neighborhood. So I think a lot of what we want to do is get a sense from you how you want to treat the design of these. How would you like to see the height restrictions? How would you like to see some of the square footage addressed? I think one of the more pressing questions that we have is regarding the size of the lots. Right now, the state will allow, as we were just talking about, a 1,200-square-foot ADU, but on a 5,000-square-foot lot, that doesn't make sense. So we're trying to get a sense, well, what does make sense? And we don't want to limit people, we want to actually encourage people to create ADUs if it makes sense for them.
Okay.
I guess we can go to the size after this, but.
Parking.
Yeah. So Commissioner Davis?
First, I want to just say that while Millbrae is my favorite place, and it is awesome, and I will cheerlead it all day long, I don't think we're particularly unique. Almost every community in San Mateo County is a bedroom community. All communities have narrow streets, usually in their older sections of town. There's nothing special about that. So worrying about safety of cars having to pass on a slightly narrow street, it's already happening right now, I don't think, I'm worried about that. I'm more worried about people having a place to live, and instead of worrying about where we're going to park our cars at night. So I wouldn't ever want to see this go any more extreme than what it already is. It just, I'm more worried about where people are going to sleep than where we're going to park cars. The streets don't belong to the homeowners, they belong to all of us. You don't own this parking space in front of your house, you know, you don't own it. So we have, part of this is to encourage people to maybe start walking more, maybe start biking more, maybe start carpooling. How about getting in an Uber instead of owning a car? It's part of what we're trying to transition to. So I'm far more excited about the house than I am the parking. And I would hate to see more and more of our front yards covered, even if it's pervious pavers, with more driveway space. Because our urban environment, our urban ecosystem needs landscaping as well. It needs living things, not just pavement. So I'm not excited about adding tons and tons of parking.
Well, we can have different ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
As far as I'm concerned, I like to put in my two cents.
And I do know that the street is not belonging to.
Oh, I know you do that, I know.
I mean, I know all that.
Totally get that.
But we've got to be able to be safe, and why create something that's unsafe if we don't have to?
But the situation's already there. We're not creating anything, anything new. We're not. The narrow street's already narrow. So I don't, I don't see it as additional. Everybody needs to slow down.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, parking-wise, I think I would agree with Commissioner Davis. I think, you know, the state as a whole has a housing crisis. We don't have a parking crisis. So it's more important that we find ways to deal with the issues where people don't have a roof over their head than having a roof over their cars. In fact, I think we need to find ways to reduce the amount of carbon footprint within the state. So I think it is important for us to address these issues head-on, right, and with a big focus on providing more much-needed affordable housing in every jurisdictions. I think, you know, every jurisdiction is somewhat falling short of their goals in providing affordable housing. And I think that's what the ADU is designed to do, creating an opportunity to give a more expedited way and an inexpensive way to create more affordable housing in a very efficient manner. So putting more requirements in front of it would be counterintuitive, right, from that ordinance, for the spirit of the ordinance. Now, having said that, we also have the, the state ordinance also said within half-a-mile of transit would preclude putting restrictions on additional parking, so long as it is within half-miles of transit, or even an attached ADU. So I think it's loud and clear that the state legislation wants us to, not to put too much gating factor in front of these, you know, ADU in terms of parking-wise. And I think, you know, and as far as, you know, the whole driving pattern, you know, going into, you know, we're already in 2019, 2020, the millennials are driving a lot less than they used to, they don't own as many cars as the previous generations people does. I think, you know, the whole driving pattern is changing. As long as we live close to transit, you know, we encourage people to exercise more and drive less, bike more and walk more. Having more parking doesn't necessarily, you know, I mean, the fact is, you know, there's only a certain limit in terms of size of a house we can build. If we have to dedicate more space to parking instead of, you know, people living in it, it would sort of become counterintuitive, as far as I'm concerned. So personally, not in favor of adding any more parking requirements to these ADU ordinances. Anybody else want to talk about parking? Should we go to size?
Sure.
Okay. Who wants to go first?
But the state is, so you don't want to even use the state recommendation on that.
So the state recommendation, if I understand it correctly, is anything within half-a-mile of transit or attached ADU, we cannot require parking. So as far as I'm concerned, based on my comment a little earlier, I would say the ordinance should not require any more parking on any ADU additions.
So on the state where it says, what did it say? No more parking required. I think, limits the authority of local jurisdiction when it comes to required, requires that no more than one, okay, requires then no more than one additional be required despite the number of bedrooms. Yeah, it was kind of.
Yeah, basically what that is saying is outside of the half-mile radius.
Absolutely.
We can, we can require one parking space for the ADU. No more than one.
Yeah.
And half a mile from El Camino Real is pretty far up, isn't it? Do we have a guesstimate?
It's at least Laurel.
Yeah.
Laurel?
Okay.
Did you? One other question, though. We keep saying affordable, but I believe in part of the presentation, it was not to be.
Well, it's an interesting topic, actually, right? So I think there is the notion of affordability by design and size, where the units may not be fetching the full market rate. And so we see that as an affordability level versus affordable, affordable housing that is deed-restricted at certain income levels that we could then turn around and report as part of our regional housing needs assessment number. So we're kind of using that term in both ways. If an owner wanted to create an ADU that was for income-restricted households, then we could count that as an affordable housing unit under the state law. But I think generally what we're talking about is because they're smaller, because they're accessory to the primary house, the rent may not be, you know, as high as other properties and therefore more affordable.
And that's where the size kind of comes in.
Correct.
And the more we have, the better prices will be overall.
Supply and demand, yes.
But they could not be considered part of your housing stock, all of these?
Right. And there it gets a bit tricky. They would have to meet the income categories for us to be able to report those to the state. So it'd have to be at either the moderate or lower, very low income levels.
I mean, in general, they're not subject to any income requirements in terms of the ADU applications, right, or who they can rent it to. But I guess, you know, the question here is, as a jurisdiction, how do we want to tailor these ordinance such that it fits the criteria or the goals of the city, right, which is really to create affordable units for people who otherwise couldn't afford to be here, right? There are a lot of people who wish to live in our community, who wish to come in, and they don't necessarily have a family of eight, right? They just, you know, maybe need a space, one-bedroom apartment, and, you know, they work within, I don't know, half-mile, two miles, you know, within where they want to work. So I think the size and the bedroom counts and all those things would sort of dictate that policy, or would sort of help achieve the goal that these ordinance is designed to do. Shall we go to size?
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to start?
Okay.
Volunteers.
So, yeah, I'm thinking 1,200 sounds way too big. But can staff give us any guidance? I mean, we are looking at Redwood City, San Bruno, San Mateo, blah, blah, there's 640, 700, 1,000, 640, 640. What, on a 5,000-square-foot lot, what does feel comfortable? What would work? Because you don't want a number that's just too big, and it makes no sense, and nobody can really do it, so you're just, you know, teasing everybody. Or too small to make it functional? So what makes sense?
Right, so I think on, certainly on larger lots, that will be a different kind of discussion. But for the standard sort of 5,000-square-foot lot, you know, we have seen some examples of a one-story, you know, ranch-style home that's existing where an application came in for, you know, 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, and, right? And so I think about this ordinance, and I think accessory, you know, what is it meant to be, what is it meant to be accessory? And I think that that means it needs to be, you know, somewhat subordinate to the primary structure on the lot. So whether that's a ratio we're trying to achieve, or if we just. So whether that's a ratio we're trying to achieve or if we just flat-out dictate a number like 800 square feet, I think that we're trying to accomplish two things. One is sort of what Commissioner Fung was talking about a moment ago, which is that that smaller, smaller units, but still functional units, will be somewhat more affordable. But that also we're trying to achieve really good design and smart layout. So I'm not answering the question--
No, I'm hoping you're dancing around a little bit longer and then come to a number.
Come to a, come to a number, yeah.
A range, perhaps.
Yeah, it's tough. It is tough. I do think that probably, you know, 1,200's too much. I think 800 is probably a very comfortable number. And, you know, you take a look at the comparative cities and you'll see what, what those ranges are as well.
Several are smaller than that.
Yeah, I have a question. What's the size of a one-bedroom apartment?
Depends. Can be 500.
Yeah.
I mean--
Huh?
Personally, I've designed properties that, I've designed studios ranging from 250 to, you know, 400 square feet.
Yeah.
One-bedrooms or--
I mean, a good one, I've seen little two-bedrooms that are 600 square feet and are very comfortable for two people.
Oh, I've lived in a 700-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bath apartment in the past, right? And people consider that luxury in that location.
And then, you know, if that's what it's meant to be, is, you know, an ADU for not the principal house, you're going to probably rent to one, two, maybe two people max with a baby or something. So I, what's the numbers here? I, I thought 500, 600 was probably very, very comfortable.
So just to kind of outline, the, the limit for a junior one-bedroom is 500 square feet. So that's, that's an existing room in a house. It can be--
That's a studio plus, right?
It's, it's basically, yeah, junior one-bedroom. And that's the, the cap, is 500 square feet for a junior ADU. You were looking for a range. What we've been seeing is somewhere between 650 and 800 for a 5,000-square-foot lot. Seems to be reasonable. We've looked a lot at some images and they are pretty eye-opening if you start to look at what a 1,200-square-foot unit on a detached garage looks like. It's competing with the main house in most cases. On a 5,000-square-foot lot, I think we would just get pummeled by the residents. The, the views over the neighbors' lots, noise, the impacts to the neighborhood itself would be pretty significant. But what we've seen in, in the applications are generally around 800 square feet.
Can you achieve those numbers with a single story?
Yes. It's an ideal size for a single-story ramble.
Now, Linda, Ms. Robertson, so you mentioned something about 5,000-square-foot lot, right, multiple times. But, you know, we do have obviously smaller lots, where standard size would be 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. And we have larger lots in the mills of state that are a little somewhat bigger, up to 10,000, maybe even more. Just, you know, from a policy standpoint, do we only allow one ADU at a time or can we have more than one ADU on larger lots, for example?
Only one per lot. And the minimum size of a lot in Milbrae is 5,000 square feet.
Okay. So no more than one ADU?
Correct.
Okay.
One of the things that we thought would be helpful to you in the chart is that we tried to group cities in San Mateo and other counties by those cities that were not dissimilar or as unique as us, going by what Commissioner Davis was kidding about before. But for those cities that were similar in size and lot size to Milbrae. And so when you look at it that way, you know, if, at first, just across the board, when we were looking at cities, there was a huge range. I mean, as, as you can see, many cities up to 1,200 square feet. And, and after looking at it more closely, it was very clear that those are the, the cities farther away from, from build-out, the ones that had, you know, more of a rural aspect to them. In other words, they had bigger lots. And, and if you see the, the core cities in San Mateo County, most of them are well under the 1,200-square-foot limit.
Right.
And those happen to be the cities that are most similar to Milbrae in terms of the size of the lots.
And like looking at San Bruno and San Mateo, for example, both limited to 640 square feet with no discussion of larger lots, nothing, there's no two standards or anything? It's just, that's it? We're done? Okay?
I think, I mean, also from the flip side, I, I think you would get into, well, why do they get--
Right.
If, if this is, you know, ministerially approved, we should all be treated the same. And why should they get more than us just because they have a bigger house on a bigger lot?
All right. Where did 640 come from?
The cities most closer to us and same size would be Burlingame, San Bruno, do we have San Carlos in here? Belmont? Do we have, we must have--
I would, I would agree with that, that, you know, it doesn't make sense to just have a blanket limit. It seems like it, you know, the, the ADU has to be subordinate, subordinate to the primary home, and then there should be proportional. So whether you have a big lot or a small lot, it would, it seemed to be fair to have the ADU size limit proportional to the primary home rather than just have a tiny home and you can have a 600-square-foot--
There is.
ADU versus--
It can't be more than 50% of the first house.
But there are other jurisdictions. If you look at Hillsborough, for example, they allow up to 1,400 square feet, which is more than 12, page two of the ADU chart.
Which one?
Page two in the ADU chart, Hillsborough allow up to 1,400 square feet. Some jurisdictions allow bigger ADUs or even multiple ADUs. I know San Francisco, they allow multiple ADUs even on R1 lots.
You know, and then one comment I would make too is that we were just talking a little bit internally, like 650 square feet on a 5,000-square-foot lot ends up being 15% of the total lot size. So I think that's probably what happens in some of these different communities. They have, they have ratios and that type of thing.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you want to give us guidance on sort of looking at ranges, we can certainly do that. We're going to hear back from the community as well. We hear from council, and then we can start really kind of tailor-making what those standards look like. But, but I think we understand, you know, that we're really trying to achieve a, an accessory unit, but we want it to be designed well. And then, you know, so if, if you want it to be on a ratio or a sliding scale, those are things that we could look at in the draft ordinance.
I've been kind of holding back, but I'd like to address or raise an issue, I'm not sure you need to address it now. But one thing, my understanding is for these ADUs is that, you know, it almost, it creates a second living property on the property, second living dwelling unit on a property.
Right.
But, you know, what is the financial burden and gain to the city? So if they require more sewer capacity, more water capacity, you know, do we increase the water bill for the homeowner proportionately? Because everybody in Milbrae is worried about their water bill. It's going up. And if you have two homes on a single property and then they pay the same water rate as a single-family unit without an ADU, that doesn't seem fair to me. And then also, in terms of property tax and tax base, if, do we add that square footage to their property tax? Is it based on number of bedrooms? I'd like to see not only a fee schedule, but also, you know, this is basically a business that the homeowner's embarking on a business to provide a rental unit. So there should be fees, annual fees. There should be inspections, making sure that the building is up to code and that there's the limited number of people, that they don't try to cram, you know, 20 people into that back room that, so that there's a, you know, breaks fire codes, that, you know, it's safe for the residents.
I think when it's built, it's going to have to be all the same fire codes. I mean, that, that's going to, that's kind of a given, I think, that I don't think--
How do we currently treat multi-units, for example? Let's say you have a R3 zone, six-unit building, for example. Do we have annual inspections from code enforcement?
No. Not after it's built. Do you mean while it's being built or--
Not after. I mean, Commissioner Wong was talking about, you know, safety as well as, as well as--
Like two or three years later?
I think, I think, wasn't there some sort of annual inspection required?
I don't think so.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think that part of this ties into making sure that it's being used as an ADU also. Because there's been a lot of concern in the neighborhoods about the Airbnb issues. You know, there's places on the Bayside neighborhoods where, you know, they say that people use the house for Airbnb, so they have at all times of the day and night, you know, the airline pilots and stewardesses just using it as an overnight stay. And so they're in and out, and then people see taxis and drop-offs and lifts and so forth coming in at all times of the day. So, you know, the part of this and part of the issues that they're confronting, like in, in San Francisco, is that people take away those rental units because they want short-term tenants. They want Airbnb. They think it's easier, easier to manage. It's more income for them. So by having, you know, just like a similar policy that we have for Airbnb and short-term units, you know, we would apply that to these also. So people, when they build these ADUs, they have to be really clear whether they designate this as an ADU or as a, you know, Airbnb or as an extension to their home. Because there's workarounds and this kind of skirting of code. If, if I say I want to build an ADU onto my existing home and it's attached, we don't want them skirting around the FARs and so forth, just, you know, adding another two bedrooms to their house and then building the super mansion that may be possible that we may see. There has to be certain requirements, like has to have a kitchen, has to have a bathroom, has to have a separate entrance. So all these requirements, we'll make sure that, you know, it's being used as intended as an ADU. And that would provide the housing that we need, and that's the intent of the whole regulation too. So part of the inspection fees or the annual fees, you know, again, they are a business. You know, they're renting the property, they're entering, becoming business owners and property managers. Why not add them, you know, consider additional tax revenue, additional water rates, you know, additional fees for inspections and, and use.
Just a few reminders. Our short-term rental ordinance doesn't allow ADUs to be rented out short-term, so we've already got that in place. If these have a separate sewer hookup, I assume that they would be billed appropriately. If they double their usage, they're going to pay twice for usage. And if there's two sewer hookups--
Right.
--they both have the baseline, so their water bills--
It's a lot of usage.
--will be two or bigger. Not all ADUs will be rented out. Many of them are thought to be a place for somebody to age in place or let their grown children live near them or that kind of thing. They will not all be rented out. I don't believe we have any rules in place for anybody who rents out their home to sign up as a business or have annual inspections if they're renting their home as a rental. So this is another home rental. So I don't, I'm not seeing that part right there. It's not, they're not like a short-term rental that is basically renting a hotel. This is normal private property rentals. So I'm just wanting to throw all that out there.
I don't think it could be monitored anyway. It would be impossible. The main thing is that when it's built, it's built correctly.
Right.
I think it's good just to have a sheet, cut sheet for, you know, residences so they understand these issues and that they've been addressed or they've been considered too.
I just want to point out that one of the things that staff will be looking at, we do have a short-term rental ordinance. However our ADU ordinance evolves, we will make sure that we're working closely with both of those ordinances so that one doesn't contradict the other, that they're designed so that they support each other. So just to make sure that you're aware that that is something that staff is aware of, and we'll be looking at that moving forward.
Personally, everybody else wants to comment on size? As far as I'm concerned, you know, when it comes to the issue of size, the first thing that comes to my mind is, you know, the intent of the ADU, right? You know, what do we intend to do with these ordinance? What problem are we trying to solve? Like we discussed a little earlier, you know, they're designed to, you know, provide an easy and efficient way and a least expensive way to create more affordable living units, right? This is designed to, to address the housing crisis that we have here in California, especially here in the Bay Area, especially upper part of the Bay Area. Just, things are just, you know, terribly expensive. So I, I would be more inclined to sort of have a tier process with this, if I may suggest. On, you know, like we have some of the smaller lots or standard-sized lot, five, 6,000-square-foot lot, I would say we should adhere to a somewhat of a smaller limit on size of the ADU. I like to be able to give the homeowner's flexibility to provide up to maybe a two-bedroom units, right? So anywhere between 640 to 750, somewhere around there, I prefer to be on a higher side of that limit so that, you know, there's some design flexibility built into that so that you can build up to maybe, for example, 750 square feet, up to two bedrooms on a, on a, on a regular-sized lot. Now whereas if you have a big lot, 10,000, 12,000-square-foot lot, things, you know, maybe a lot that is greater than, say, 8,000 square feet, for example, right? Then you have more flexibility, you inherently have more space, bigger homes. Maybe you can build up to maybe 1,000, maybe even up to 1,200 square feet on your ADU. Since, you know, you typically, you're going to be on, on areas where you have bigger streets, bigger lots, so parking's not so much of an issue, then to give them an opportunity to design a bigger ADU, since the house would probably likely be bigger anyway. Now, one thing to keep in mind is that these ADUs that is being created should not change the neighborhood characteristic, right? They shouldn't be, they shouldn't look at the single-family home. I mean, they should stay within a single-family home neighborhood. The characteristics of the neighborhood should stay the same, even with these ADUs being developed, being built. So I, I think they should all adhere to the current FAR setback and height limitations. As in like if you propose an ADU, you shouldn't get extra density bonus, you shouldn't get extra FAR bonuses nor setback exceptions or height limitation exceptions. They should all adhere to your current planning standard. So long as you're willing to sacrifice a certain amount of your, of your FAR within your current limitations. On a standard-sized lot, you can build, for example, up to 750. And if you have an oversized lot to begin with, then you can build slightly bigger ADUs, maybe up to 1,200. That's my suggestion. Other commissioners are welcome to comment.
I guess I just would hate the person who has, let's, let's say that 8,000 square feet is your cutoff. The person who has 7,994--
Right.
They're really bummed, probably, right? So I don't, but when, when Lisa suggested that maybe we just keep it the same for everybody, I haven't really settled on this yet, but maybe keeping it the same for everybody does have some value. I'm not sure.
Maybe a sliding scale, a percentage?
Maybe, except, well, maybe a percentage, but I, I do like the idea of probably keeping it within the FAR because what I would hate to see is a house completely maxed out and then dropping an AD on too, right?
Exactly.
So that doesn't make any sense.
It should stay within the characteristics of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
In the write-up here, it states that the state allows for a total floor area for an ADU up to maximum 1,200 square feet or 50% of the floor area of the primary dwelling. If they can go up to the, that limitation, 50% of the floor area of the primary dwelling, how are the other cities able to limit it to like 600 square feet, 640 square feet? Because--
It's local ordinance, right?
Right. That's the state law.
Put limitations on them.
So the local could be stricter than the--
Yes.
More restrictive.
Stricter.
Yeah. Unlike the parking, in certain areas, they give the local municipalities a little bit more flexibility, and others, they just mandate the way that it's supposed to be. That said, we still recognize if there are uniqueness or things that we would like to see, we'll continue to monitor changes to the law that may or may not be in the pipeline or perhaps maybe even, you know, make a few phone calls on our own to see if there's a way to get some flexibility, if there's something that we really need that's a little bit different than the state. I don't know if that we'll have luck, but we're not trying to close out any policy conversations that the commission or the, or the community or the council wants to have.
And when we talk about having to meet all of the standards for any given neighborhood, when it comes to even things like setbacks, at one point on one of the slides, you said things that were coming up were setback exceptions. Was that in general for plans or for ADUs that came in? Because who would grant an exception if they never come to the planning commission, right? So they're going to have to fit every single rule, no matter what, right? Okay.
I have a quick question.
Unless the exception was previously granted.
But not to the ADU, right?
Well, let's say you previously granted certain exceptions, so setback, second-story setback, or other types of exception that previously had been granted, now they come back with an ADU addition within the envelope.
And that does occur.
Okay.
And that has occurred.
Have fun with that.
And now that you're saying that, then the question will be-- And now that you're saying that, then the question will be, upon a conversion, can we have an applicability standard that then would suggest that you'd have to comply? I have to think about that, like the exception request has been granted, but the exception request was really only for the primary living space. Now it's being converted.
Change of use.
So, right, so the question becomes whether or not we can have something that would suggest that it's either not possible or that you'd have to meet the, accept the step back, ma'am.
Or a certain amount of time after it, which these exceptions had been granted, say five years later, then, you know, it proves that you didn't have that intent to leverage that exception.
That's another method that's, that's correct.
Staff has been using that as kind of a mechanism to track things. We do keep an eye out if we do see a lot of building permits that are applications that come in for piecemealing. So if someone does do a renovation.
Serial permitting?
Right, and then two years or within, within two years, we pay special attention to that.
Yeah.
And that's generally how we work. But of late, we have seen a lot more additions and requests for exceptions, particularly with second-floor additions, which, again, with some of the zoning, so for example, the R2, because there are no restrictions on the second-floor setback, it lends itself to vertical addition. So you've got a large area where you can add 88% FAR, but you can only have 50% lot coverage. So that, that combination rewards someone or encourages someone to build vertically rather than a horizontal addition. So in that situation, having the flexibility to reduce the second-floor step back is, it could be a helpful mechanism to encourage more housing. Whereas if we didn't have to require, many, many of the applications that do come in will request a detached addition and they want to build 1,200 square feet and they want to do a second floor. But they can't build that much square footage because the setback requirements for the second floor limits the design. So you're basically restricted. You'll only end up with maybe, it's basically impossible to build a second floor within that restriction. So to meet the setback requirements of the lot, which is determined on, by the distance of the width of the lot, you have a 10-foot setback. So if you build an ADU with a second-floor 10-foot setback, it makes the second floor impossible because you've only got 1,200 square feet to work with. So with the second floor, that's not much. But if you, if you relax those second-floor restrictions, then maybe you do have some flexibility.
Currently on the, on R2, those, you don't have those, right?
Correct. That's why I'm saying that the R2 actually encourages the second floor. Along with this, with the lot coverage, it encourages a second-floor vertical addition.
But there are R2s, so that's, that's what it was meant for.
Exactly. It's precisely, it's a perfect situation to have an ADU.
Yeah, yeah, and there are...
But we don't have a whole lot of them.
Right, we don't have a lot of R2 in the city. Well, because it was not designed that way. It was designed for a single family.
It's very good from a design perspective to have a mix of the housing types. So again, this is one of the, we're looking at this as an opportunity to not only provide housing, but to introduce different housing types and have a little more mix of the middle housing, which is lacking all over California. So that's something that we want to get ahead of. And in doing this ADU ordinance, then this is an opportunity.
I think some of the requirements for some of the cities, they said they can impose some restrictions, like it has to have similar architectural style or color matching or so forth. So I'd suggest that, you know, that be the case, especially like if it's an R2 and a second story, that it should match the existing structure. But if it's like a single-family R1, then it's obscure. It can't be seen from the front of the property or neighboring, then maybe it's not as necessary to match the existing style and colors and everything too. I'd suggest.
Okay, anybody else want to comment on size? Move on to setbacks.
I think we're looking at 600 to 700. Is that what we're kind of leaning towards?
Well, I sort of gave the staff my directions, my comments about. I mean, I think we should, I mean, the ADU itself, I would recommend up to maybe 750 for a standard-sized lot. For larger lots, maybe we can give them a little bit more leeway.
But then again, it has to be within the existing FAR requirements and the...
It has to be within the existing FAR requirements and the setback requirements, height limitations.
Setback requirements for backyards, we talked about. I guess the next question was about can it eat into the 1,000 square foot requirement? And then does that need to maintain? Obviously, these backyard ADUs probably won't meet the back fence line setback requirements, which is, what was that? It's pretty lengthy.
The rear setback is 10 square feet and, or I'm sorry, 10...
10 feet.
Sorry.
10 feet, five feet on the sides.
Many of our single-family residential are, we have easements that are co-terminus with that setback. So assuming that there's no easement, then we would have flexi, we might have flexibility with the 10-foot setback.
How do you mean flexibility?
In terms of relaxing it, if you want to encroach, if there's room to encroach in five, four or five feet into the setback to allow for an ADU, looking at it on a case-by-case basis, that might be something that we want to encourage or explore.
Yeah, and just to build on that, you know, I mean, the thought could be that, you know, the primary, the primary home meets the setback because the accessory dwelling unit is ancillary to the house, is smaller. You know, we haven't got to the height and the height conversation yet. That, you know, let's say it was capped height and it's smaller size based on the sliding scale we're talking about, maybe, you know, a five-foot rear setback is appropriate. I don't know, but it could be. It could be because it's smaller, it functions more as an accessory structure and therefore, you know, a relaxed setback could be appropriate.
Any sense of how many backyards actually have enough room to do this? I'm thinking of some houses, like in the Meadows, their backyards are all tiny. Their yards are all in the front. So, I mean, like that whole neighborhood's probably out for ADUs. But is if, if we maintain that 1,000 square feet, if we try to, is it going to take a lot of people out of the game?
Could?
Yeah, we haven't gotten that deep into the analysis yet, yeah.
So relaxing it sounds like a good idea to me, just so we can offer as many opportunities as possible within reason.
But I think we would want to have an alternate minimum setback. You know, at least enough space to get around and do construction so that repairs, so that they're not having to go on the neighboring property to fix their, fix their window and so forth.
Do we have many detached garages here in Millray?
Yeah, we do have quite a few, especially in the older kind of tree-lined streets areas. Taylor, for example, Poplar, all of those areas.
Our area does too. Our area has all.
How does people feel about, you know, let's say you have a detached garage that happens in the backyard, for example, like a driveway?
Yeah.
From the front that goes to, you know, a lot of houses in Eastern addition in Birmingham, a lot of those setups like that, where the garage is actually detached in the rear. Putting an ADU on top of that garage may not be such a bad idea. So you can leverage the existing lot coverage. It's not increasing lot coverage, but yet, you know, you're building up on top of already a structure, for example.
Right, that is an option. However, the way that the R zoning codes read, the second floor is impossible to build because you have to have the setbacks.
That brings up the other issue though, about people wanting to convert their existing garage into an ADU. Don't do, so if they have a garage in the back with a driveway and they're wanting to convert that, is that allowable to?
But have to meet the current parking requirement anyways. So if you convert that garage into a living space, then you lose your current parking and that wouldn't be in compliance.
So I guess that's a question for staff in these conversions. When they want to convert the garage to an ADU, do they have alternate parking? Or does it mean that they lose their parking entirely?
Well, like we were discussing a little earlier, I would say the addition of the ADU should not be a reason for them to ask for exceptions to the current, to the current setup, if you will, right? So if the current single-family home has two parking and converting that ADU, converting that garage into an ADU would eliminate that parking, then that wouldn't be in compliance.
Currently, if you take, our current zoning code for single-family houses, two covered parking spaces. If you take those two parking spaces out of service, you have to replace them.
That's right.
I do think there might be some room to discuss replacing them that if they're...
Off-street parking, front yard.
Not necessarily off-street parking, but even driveway parking or surface parking.
Like in the front, for example.
Right, just to kind of build in some flexibility with the parking.
Right, so that would be okay, possibly?
Yes.
Okay.
But then that takes away, they're expanding their house. They had more parking, they have less, bigger house, more rooms, more people and then less parking too, so.
Well...
It goes back to the issue about even some cities require more parking with an ADU. And where if they convert the garage to ADU, it takes away parking so they get, you know, less parking with their ADU. So we're going reverse of what other cities...
But I think the argument goes back to what we talked about a little earlier, right? We have a housing crisis, not a parking crisis. So as long as they meet the requirement of the off-street parking. For example, if they have a surface parking, you know, driveway parking, front yard that is not in, within the setback area, that could park a vehicle, right? For example, and they're willing to do that. And if there are a creative way for them to address the parking issues such that they can put additional people within those built houses, that would fit into sort of the intent of the ordinance, right? Which is to provide affordable housing within a neighborhood that doesn't necessarily change the characteristics of these neighborhoods.
Of course, we would, we would be talking about ADUs only and not an addition to a house. So the addition to a single-family house would still require the two-car cover garage. It's only when you're adding an ADU would you be able to relax those or to have more flexibility with the parking.
Do other cities have any of this verbiage in their ordinances? Can we get creative enough to offer you enough flexibility where you have nobody up here to help you?
Yeah, let me, let me jump in and say, the law is pretty clear on this. There's a very specific paragraph pertaining to garages and the use of, the conversion of garages for ADUs. It's very specific in saying that any lost space must be, must be replaced, but there is flexibility how. So it can be tandem, it can be parking lifts, which I don't think are an issue here, but you never know.
You'd be surprised.
Uncovered, covered, tandem, et cetera. So, so the law is...
Provide that parking.
Right, so the law is, is clear about that. It's not that we can mandate a certain sort of parking.
Make sure you replace it.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Any more discussions on setbacks? I think that's where we started, right?
Kind of. And we've already dabbled into the 1,000 square feet open space too, the next category.
Well, should we finish one section?
And we've dabbled a little into lot coverage and floor area on the next page.
I think I started to hear some dabbling in the architectural neighborhood character too, but that could be me.
A teeny bit.
All right, we'll just try to limit one section at a time. So are we done on setbacks?
Are we going back?
No, are we done on setbacks?
We're done.
Okay, so the 1,000 square feet, do we have any more discussions?
The house, so we're talking about setbacks on the ADU.
Correct. I mean, do we have any...
Well, we're not gonna, well, maybe we should go to second story first. Otherwise, if it's a first story, if we're only going to allow a single story, are we going to need setbacks? Just the normal five feet on each side, right?
Well, so there's the five feet on each side and then there's also the rear.
Right.
If this, if the detached ADU, I mean, this is really, this little section right here only pertains to a detached ADU, right?
Right.
If you were to build a brand-new sort of a structure.
Right, so yes, you're going to have your setbacks that are, the whole city has the same setbacks.
No, but there'll be exceptions from the 10-foot rear setback if...
Right, so for example, let's say you want to build a nanny unit in the, the second unit in the rear.
I know that we need to have more housing for everyone. However, the more we build and we're putting cement all over the ground, it's going to hurt the environment. So we've got to have some common sense here.
You want peers?
I mean, somebody, and I mean, I know we're putting all these pavers in and if they're not permeable, it's the same as having cement and, and the environment's getting ruined. So I...
We can, that's, that's something to consider. But we also consider the impact of people living closer to work, not being, not driving as far. That obviously, the environment is a big complicated system that we have to worry about.
You know, it really is.
So we might offset the fact that...
I'm over there and I'm thinking, that's why I was more in favor. If when you build a building, just keep going up than keep covering more. And, and, and it concerns me. And I, I think we have to try to balance the two, but we can't just cover up everything.
Oh, no.
Well, we're getting close with, I mean, I look, I have a 5,000 square foot house and if I were to put another 800 square feet in the back, it would be no more yard, kind of like what you're talking about, the Meadows. And then everything would be covered up. So I think number one, I think we need to learn how to live with less space. So maybe we don't all need huge houses, you know? And if they're all a little bit smaller, then there would be space for everyone instead of somebody saying, I need a 5,000 square foot or a 6,000 square foot house, you know? And filling it up, maybe they could put another little one and then someone could live in the little one. But...
Well, how about the idea, I mean, we already have a lot coverage limitation at 50%, right? So, I mean, what Commissioner Quip was saying earlier, and I, and I hear that loud and clear and I, you know, somewhat agree with that. For example, if you were to build a secondary unit in the rear of the lot, would they still meet the 50% lot coverage or not?
They'll have to.
Right?
If that's our...
And if that's the case, then it will be no different than if you were to build a single-family home without the ADU at 50% lot coverage.
Right, just build a big one by addition.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but when we do the 50% lot coverage, there's generally a second story, so we're not, well, we're still covering 50%. But when we do the ADU then, we still can only cover 50% of the lot?
Currently, yes.
We don't, we don't change the lot coverage setback and FAR requirements, right?
I got it. So if there's this house here and we're doing another ADU, it's still, between the two of them, can still only have 50% lot coverage? Correct, okay.
We just sometimes might get a little closer to the back fence than we might otherwise.
That's right, it's about setbacks, not so much, right? I mean, I mean, part of the setback requirement, if I may, it's, it is a fire requirement, right? Separate structures have to be separated from each other for at least a certain amount of feet for fire rating, minimum 10, in order for them to have, is it one or two hour fire ratings, right? But also at the same time to give people private...
That's right, we're still not going to go over that 50%.
Correct.
And unless the ordinance allows flexibility for ADUs only.
Yeah, and, and, you know, having the backyard...
I'd like to keep it at the 50%.
I think you're getting guidance right now from us.
Well, I'm over here and I'm thinking...
No, I said us.
We got it. We got that 50% thing done.
And furthermore, that we talked in the beginning about just maintaining the existing code, like the front setback. So they maintain the front setback, it maintains the character of the neighborhood also. Also, that if we do allow that variance for the rear yard setback, then, you know, they have to make sure that there's a clause about, you know, maintaining privacy of neighbors so that they don't hold up and, you know, the windows don't go right into the neighboring property and so forth.
No, as far, I mean, I just want to go back to the point a little earlier. Requiring 1,000 square feet of open space within the rear, one-third of the lot. But if you were to put an ADU in there that is detached, then that might not work well. But if you were to put an ADU in there that is detached, then that might not work well within this guideline. I mean, if we were to allow any sort of flexibility at all, I would say the rear yard had to be at least minimum 1,000 square feet, which is what this ordinance really is trying to dictate. You have to have a certain amount of greenery space in the rear.
Correct.
Right, so rather than saying one-third of the lot must be within, you must have 1,000 square feet of open space within one-third of the lot, the rear one-third of the lot, if you were to put an ADU back there, I would say, I would suggest the ordinance should say, give you a little bit of flexibility, but at the same time, you should still maintain 1,000 square feet of rear yard space, whether it's one-third or up to one-half the lot, for example. Does that sound fair to everybody? Because the intent of this ordinance, I mean, the intent of this design guideline is to make sure that we have a certain amount of rear yard space, you know, instead of just building all the way out to the back of the house, right? So if we can accommodate a detached ADU in the rear, but yet at the same time still maintain 1,000 square feet of open space in the rear of the property, I think it will still sort of retain the spirit of this guideline.
Yeah, I think we understand what you're saying. I mean, like, we may loosen up the one-third criteria.
Right.
And just ensure that we have 1,000 square feet of open space.
In the rear.
In the, behind.
Right.
Primary structure.
Right.
Maybe that's the way that we might, you know, look at the language.
I mean, you could obviously massage it a little bit, but the spirit of that is that the rear yard has to be no less than 1,000 square feet of open space. And that also obviously has to, you know, meet FIRE setback requirements on your ADU, you know, not to be too close to your neighbor. So, you know, privacy is also another thing, right? I mean, if you have a window that is in the rear of the ADU units that looks into the backyard of your neighbor, that might become an issue. So the placement of these windows would also have to come into play in terms of privacy concerns.
Yeah, thank you, and that's a good point, too. I think just quickly on that point, you know, as we start to, you know, transition into architectural and neighborhood compatibility, I think what staff would like to hear from the commission is how we might do that through design rather than sort of statements like maintain privacy, right? Those, the findings that we have in like, say, design review permits, because we have that authority to do that, we're able to do that analysis and present findings. Here, since it's gonna be still ministerial, we sort of need to figure out a way to mandate that within the way that we designed the structure. So, you know, smaller windows or balconies, whatever we're gonna talk about.
Right, a window that faces the, you know, back property line or the side property lines, right? Try to minimize those, or maybe get a privacy window, a privacy glass, for example. But you can still maintain the light in the air. Whereas if you're the window that faces the interior of the lot, then you give them a little bit more leverage for clear glass window, for example.
Right, and I also want to point out that, again, if we tweak one element, it may impact the other issues that are happening. So for example, if you reduce the maximum size to 650 square feet, you're not gonna have a second-story situation, so the issue of privacy will eliminate itself.
Minimal.
When we're talking about this, it's, you know, more than likely to be a detached ADU that is in the rear of the lot.
Correct, yeah, and then if you have a fence that's a six-foot fence, so the visibility is going to be
Correct.
less of an issue if you have a 15-foot structure.
Right, I understand. If it's a single-story, then the six-foot fence is already, the top fence is already over the sightline.
Correct.
So privacy issue itself, it's no longer.
Right, so some of these issues may eliminate other issues.
Very well. More discussions on the rear 1,000 square feet open space, anybody? Squip? Move on to lot coverage and FAR. I'll go first. No volunteers. I would say it should maintain within the same guideline as the zoning ordinance already designated. 55 for single-family, 88 for R2, and whatever it is that is for R3. It should not exceed those limitations.
Do we have any R3s?
Yeah, we do.
Couple. Where are they?
On Richland Drive, I think.
Oh, yeah.
A bit of those. By the way, if it's R3 zone, do we allow more than one ADU or is it still just one? One only. Anybody?
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what most of the other cities are doing, just out of curiosity? We don't need to be sheep, but if they've already tried it and it's working, there's no sense in us messing with it.
Not to my knowledge.
So what are they doing? How are they doing this? Are the other cities doing something similar, just keeping the same FAR requirements?
They're not affecting their current zoning code. They're looking at the state guidelines and using that rather than tweaking their existing zoning.
Looks like there are just a couple on the list that are requiring that they comply with the underlying zone standards. Looks like Burlingame and Pacifica, those are the two that kind of pop out, but others, you know, and it really does just get down to what level of flexibility you're trying to give. And so I think once we take some of the guidance and start to put pen to paper for some site plans, because we'll need to do some sample site plans after that, it'll start to become even more clear. But I think if our standard right now is, you know, we want to see everybody comply with the underlying zoning standards, FAR and height and that type of, I'm sorry, FAR and lot coverage, then we'll do the math on some site plans, and if we see any problems, then we'll certainly highlight that.
I don't want to go too much around in circles, but again, it goes back to that issue about the use of that ADU and if they in the future convert it back to, you know, portion, part of the house, if it's an attached ADU, then it still maintains the existing FAR and floor coverage ratio so that it's not inconsistent with, some people get benefits from increased FAR with an ADU versus I can't increase my house size and can't have more floor area for my structures, one versus the other. It's a lot of parity and it keeps things consistent.
Anybody else want to comment on FAR?
I kind of like what you said.
Okay, shall we move on to architecture and characters of the neighborhood? Okay, who wants to go? Nobody?
I can. These, if they're attached, I'm pretty sure that our fine staff will make sure it matches the house that they're attaching it to, so that's probably not a problem. When they're detached and in the backyard, and I'm gonna guess most of the time invisible to the rest of the world. I mean, really, especially if, we haven't got there to the single-story idea, but if we keep these at a single story, at first I thought, yeah, sure, of course it should match the house. But that example you had of the ranch-style house with the cute little modern thing in the back was nice. So they don't necessarily have to match, maybe. Especially if the design, like that house that had that roof that sloped up, it probably was letting a nice light into the house. I mean, it, there might have been a real, not just aesthetics, but practical reasons in that why they chose that design. So maybe it doesn't absolutely have to be matchy-matchy.
I think it just needs to be compatible.
Yeah.
So that visually, it's gonna look nice.
Right, except who's gonna see it besides the people living there? Like I say, if it really is a single-story, I'm envisioning a single-story.
No, but.
The neighbors really can't see it too much.
You don't want something.
And from the front yard, you can't see it too much. I mean, I'm not suggesting everybody just go crazy, but they may not have to match exactly. If they could tie them together somehow, maybe with color or some materials, but maybe they don't necessarily have to be ranch and ranch.
Well, but that's under the assumption of an interior lot.
That's true.
If it's a corner lot, for example, or if there's a wide driveway that goes, that drives all the way in the back, that you can see clearly what that second
Yes.
unit is gonna look like. I mean, there are likely to be many exceptions to that, right? So I think in general, I mean, if you build a modern, right, in the back, you don't want to see a two-door, right? But if it is a ranch in the front, or if it is really a traditional-style Victorian, for example, I mean, you don't necessarily want to see, you know, cedar panel with flat roof with this big, you know, look like a rack center, right? I mean, it's just, you know, I think, again, that goes back to the discussion a little earlier that I was advocating, that these additional structures, should they be built, right? Should conform to the same neighborhood characteristics as they currently have been approved for.
Except our neighborhoods do have a mix of architectural styles. So I think you either have to decide that it either matches the front house, basically.
Right.
Or within reason, you don't match, because if you say, like, a lot of these descriptions said compatible with the house or the neighborhood characteristics, which you could then have a house, a neighborhood full of Victorians and one modern house, main structure, right?
Right.
Who decides to do something different in the back? Because it's Victorian in the neighborhood, I'm gonna put Victorian ADU in? In front of my, behind my beautiful modern masterpiece that I got through the planning commission?
Right.
So it, I don't know how to give you flexibility. I trust you to get it right, but I don't know how to tell you how to do it.
Well, I think it has to look, it has to look, it has to look like it's part of the house that is being designed and being implemented on, right? I mean, if you.
Except what if you can't see it?
Yeah, but they can see it.
Well, I think a lot of times you might not be able to see it. You might catch a glimpse of it now and again, but if it really is.
Even if you can't see it, I mean, if I, for example, if I were to be the homeowner and I designed an ADU that is to be built in the backyard, right? Do I really want to build something that is completely different?
I'm not suggesting everybody should do it, but, I mean, when I walked in the room, I thought, yeah, I want them to kind of match. And then I saw that example and said, maybe they don't have to match. So now I'm confused, because that looked really cute.
I suggested some language, if it has to be demonstrated that from their design drawings, that it's not viewable. If it's viewable from the public, from the front or neighboring properties.
In the back.
It has to match.
Well, it's gonna be low.
Blended or matched with the existing property.
Well.
I mean, extreme cases like, I'm thinking like Hillsborough Fred Flintstone House, you know? There's a lot of discussion about that, if it's obviously in view of public.
And I think it's cute.
Then, you know, there has to be some concessions to not be a nuisance to the neighboring.
Okay, so another argument is that, yes, it may not necessarily be seen from the front, but, you know, if it's an interior lot, at least five neighbors might be able to see it.
Yeah.
Three in the rear, two on the side.
They all have second stories to look down into your backyard, yes.
Possibly.
Possibly.
There are likely to be a lot of two-story houses in the neighborhood. I mean, we're likely to have
Right.
more renovations coming in, and everyone that comes in are likely to be two-story. I mean, it might, there's an argument that these things being built in the backyard may not be seen from the front, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they could just be anything they want, right? So, I mean, it's still conform to some sort of a design guideline that looks similar to the house that is currently being built, so that they look coherent.
So what staff is hearing is that there should be some architectural compatibility. There are examples of traditional-style homes that are modernized because they articulate the same general vocabulary. So I do think I know what you're saying. And it's difficult to articulate without showing you an example of it, but I think that that one example that we showed earlier was kind of extreme, where they do look completely different. But there are lines and there are roof lines that can be compatible, even though one is just a sloped roof and the other is a pitched roof. I think that that, there is a design articulation that can happen. And as long as that's compatible, then you're okay with that.
I think I'm okay. I think what I'm looking for in all of these buckets is enough flexibility for people to do what they need to do, within reason. I don't suggest people should go crazy or anything, but within reason, I just want to make sure we don't make it so strict that there's no flexibility, that's all.
What about like prefab houses? I can imagine a lot of people just pouring a slab and sticking, getting a prefab house and just.
That didn't come up.
I think that'll be tough. I mean, how are you gonna get a prefab house that is in the back and where is this house in the front?
Is that what people do when they do ADUs? Do they come up with just like prefab?
Has anybody come up with that?
There are examples of that, prefab houses being craned into lots, yes.
Here?
In Millbrae, not that I can think of, but it does exist.
But we haven't really, and there's no discussion about that.
That would be.
Are we allowing that in Millbrae?
Well.
Where they pour it and then it's a manufactured house or?
We, you know, we may, but right now, as it stands, any new home construction does need the design review permit. So it's still gonna be subject to, you know.
No, but I'm saying, what about on these ADUs? Is that something that we would accept?
I suppose prefab home is just a way of construction, right? Prefab home can still be built and designed according to the design guidelines that we currently do have in place. How they build it, whether it's prefab or stick frame, it's really not something the planning commission cares about. Right?
Question.
Yeah. I mean, if they prefab a house that fits into our guideline, then they can do whatever they want. They can do a prefab home.
Maybe prefab, manufactured, I guess there's different kinds of.
It's, I mean, we're talking about the way of construction, not so much the design, right? Whether it's prefab, pre-manufactured, or stick frame, built on site, this commission doesn't care. That's my understanding.
Does building care?
Well, it, you know, it needs to meet, obviously, the minimal standards to obtain a building permit, but I think the point is, is that it needs to fit the guidelines that we're, that we're talking about under, you know, from a design perspective. And so what I'm hearing is, you know, we want to have some level of flexibility, and so we'll have to think about the language. Of course, we also recognize that in certain situations, you know, some backyards may be more visible, and so that needs to be a little more sensitive.
And then you have to be a little bit more.
So we'll need to think a little bit about how we kind of, you know, put this forth, and then, again, you know, we'll hear from others in the community as well, and we'll take it from there.
And obviously, these are ministerial-type approval, right? And if the applicant feels that the interpretation of these ordinance after they're being drafted, right? If they disagree with the staff decision, they can always appeal to the planning commission, I imagine.
No.
Oh, no? Not appealable?
Right, so that's, I think that is one of the challenges here, right? So I think we want to be as specific as we can, but we also want to have some flexibility built in, right? Because they are ministerial, there is no, there's no appeal that I'm aware of. We can look at process and ask the questions about whether or not, if somebody wanted to do something different, can that happen at the staff level? I don't know, I'll have to look at that. But the way it stands now, most of these just have to meet the standards, and then they're, you know, they're administrative plan check applications.
Can there be a definition of the ADU to include a kitchenette? Required to have a kitchenette or a livable?
I think by definition, they do, right?
They're required to have, to meet, to be a dwelling, an accessory dwelling, it has to have a kitchen.
Okay.
Comments about architectural neighborhood characteristics, anybody else?
I probably said enough.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, what about the access to the dwelling units? And what's the difference if it's a separate unit? Will it require a separate address? Is it considered a separate address?
The one that was approved on, down the street from me, I think it's Juanita. I just saw the address now, and it has the address, and then it has a B, like an A and a B or something on it. So I guess they do have to have a separate address.
Right, so the way it stands, and we've been talking to our partners in FIRE, and so the preference is really that these do get their own addresses and that it's very visible. And so we've been talking a little bit internally about whether or not we're able to create some other administrative performance standards, such as having two addresses that are fully visible, whatever the language is, just to make sure that that meets, you know, what our partners in FIRE would like to see from a fire life safety issue. So, yeah, so that's something that we're looking of trying to add that into the ordinance to make sure that's clear.
Well, that one is definitely there, and it's the new kind that light up, so.
Speaking of fire, I don't mean to bring up a difficult issue there, but if they were to build a detached ADU, which means it's a separate structure.
Yeah.
Would they require fire sprinklers and alarms?
Well, they don't now.
The laws, again, this is an area the law is pretty clear on. If sprinklers are required in the primary dwelling, then yes, they would be required. If not required in the primary dwelling, then no, they cannot be required.
Even in a separate new structure?
Even in a separate new. Even in a separate new structure.
Good.
So these issues about the addresses and the kitchenettes, that'll help assure that the unit's being properly used as an ADU, and provide safety for the tenants, and also helps assure the neighboring residents that it's not going to turn into some Airbnb party house and so forth.
Architecture and neighborhood character, are we done? All right. Height limit, second story?
Single story, please.
If it's detached?
Yes.
That's one commissioner?
Definitely.
Definitely what?
Single story.
Definitely single story, very well. Two commissioners. Commissioner Wong?
Well, no preference. I mean, for example, the R2 units, when they had a second story, two-story R2 unit, and then they built it to match the existing structure, and then-
Well, then it's going to take light away, more light away from the houses next door. My beans won't grow.
Are we going to see any design reviews if people do variance requests on these ADUs? So we will-
ADUs are ministerial, again.
Yeah.
They don't come to planning commission.
Okay.
So, you know, so I think by definition, since they do not come to planning commission, no hearing is required, you know, no notices are required, right? Putting up a second story with privacy issues and potential view blockages would be, you know, very challenging to do. And it will be very difficult for staff to bear that, that burden of approval on a two-story, you know, ADU development, where these things could potentially become an issue later on, right? So I think I would agree with both Vice Chair Quip, as well as Commissioner Davis, that this should be just a one-story on a separate, if it were to be built on a separate structure.
I have-
Go ahead.
Next, I want to say something when you-
Go ahead, if you would, go ahead.
Okay. We're talking about standalone ADUs now. What if somebody does the junior ADU and it's attached? Did we cover that enough?
The junior ADU would, would be within the house already, so you're not adding any square footage?
You're, okay.
So that would-
It's still, somebody can't come and, well, somebody can't come and say, I want to maybe even enlarge my house to accommodate an ADU, or, or-
That does happen. We do see a home additions, and then they convert it to an ADU, in which case it would be considered a junior ADU. But again, they're limited by the square footage of 500 square feet.
But, yeah, then it would not be ministerial, then.
Yeah, there are, any, any version of an accessory dwelling unit, whether it's attached, detached-
Or junior.
Or junior, are all ministerial. But what, what does bring up the question, I think is a topic we were talking about earlier this evening, is if a homeowner were to add on to their home, under the pretenses of it being addition to the, addition to the house, and let's say they were granted an exception, and then later wanted to convert that to a junior ADU, which is within the confines of the home, it gets back to this time limitation about when, when are we going to allow for conversions to occur? And so I think we have to think about-
Okay, but-
Yeah.
Say they want to expand the house to accommodate one in the house.
In the future.
No, now. Say they want to have it as an attached-
Right.
And, and there's going to be a little kitchen, but it'd be, I'm just thinking, then it would have to be two stories.
Could be, right, and that would be permitted by right? It'd be part of the ministerial process.
But then you'd be allowing a second story, and we're talking about one story, I see.
We're only talking about detached.
Yeah, detached.
Right, but then, then it would be, it could be a second story, then.
It'd be a second story, but it'll come to planning commission because it's a second-story addition.
No, it wouldn't.
No, it'd be second story because it would be part of the existing house, so it's attached, right?
It's attached, but if they just come in and say, we're going to build an ADU-
On the second story?
As, and the first house is, is been there for 20 years, say, and it's a second-story house, and they just come to you and say, we want to do an ADU that's attached to our house. It would still be ministerial, however, then we might have issues with light and privacy.
You mean within the current envelope?
No, it would be added on.
Well, that's, that's where we're relying on the FAR, the step backs, all of the underlying zoning standards, to ensure that compatibility and control of the-
So wait, so if, if this, if the ADU application that comes in actually changes the envelope of the building?
Yes.
It's still ministerial? On, even on the second story?
Yes.
That might be a problem.
That's what I was-
That might be a problem.
That's the law.
I mean, in order to get around that, then we just, I mean, the one-story, first-story only would eliminate that case, so that, no. Because we can't have everyone building second stories with ADUs.
They're not building second stories, they're adding to a home that's already-
Sounds like they could use that as, as a loophole, for example, to add on to a second-story vertical addition, and calling it an ADU without going through planning commission.
Yep.
But they're going to have to go through the staff, and they're going to have to put in a kitchen. It is an ADU, it's not a pretend ADU, it has to be one.
Well, thank you.
Can't, can't-
Nobody, nobody forces you to rent anything out.
Right.
You could build an ADU, and you can have yourself living in it.
Yep.
Yep.
For sure.
Right, so, I mean, it's-
We should think about it.
Yeah, that needs to be thought through. A little bit more.
Yeah.
Because you're changing the envelope of it.
If it's an existing envelope, that's-
And it's okay.
But somebody, yeah, may just-
You're basically adding a second-story addition, changing the envelope, increasing the size of your home, without having to go through planning commission approval.
Because, yeah.
What does state law say about this?
It's, it's acceptable to the state. Again, the goal for them is to provide housing. Nothing they're doing is contrary to the zoning code that we have. If someone came in, and they often do, and that happens quite frequently, is they're doing a second-floor addition to an already-existing second floor. If they use it as an ADU, then that's fine. What we try to, what staff tries to do at the initial meeting, when someone comes in and says they want to pull a permit for an ADU, we want to clarify what their goal is. Is this something that you're just adding on to your house? Or is this, is this something that you want to rent out? Is this, do you want to max out your FAR? We just want to understand what the ultimate goals of the applicant are. If they do want an ADU, there's nothing that prohibits them from, from doing that.
Right, I think, sorry, I think one thing that we're trying to avoid is for people to use the, the ordinance of the ADU to try to, to try to use it as a loophole, to add on to a second-story addition without having to go through planning commission hearing.
Right, so maybe one, another way of looking at it is maybe we do have another criteria on the size, when it's an attached second-story addition to an existing, single-family home. So again, we have the ability to control the size, but, you know, if you felt like that was something that would, that would work, then staff still has, even though it's ministerial, we still have the leeway to make sure it's incorporated within the architecture of the existing home, that's compatible, that type of thing. But again, it would be a second-story addition, so that's just something to think about.
If we put a cap on the size of ADUs, does it matter whether it's attached or detached?
Doesn't.
So if we say 650 or 700, whatever, you know, the number comes out to be, I mean, they still couldn't add on more than that, right?
If that 750 square feet is a lot.
Yeah, I think, I think some careful consideration had to be made, so that, you know, again, I mean, I'm saying this like a broken record here, that they cannot use the convenience and the leeway of ADU, use it as a way to, as a loophole, to add into a second-story addition without having to go through the public hearing process.
Right, and that's, that was something that we mentioned earlier, is that one of the things that we're seeing are an increase in applications that come in with a kind of dual permit process. One, they'll want to do an addition, a significant addition to an already-existing home, and then they'll want to build an ADU at the same time. That ADU may be detached, in which case that would not be something that commission could review. However, the addition does require a planning commission, or the addition does require a planning commission review. So we have to separate the ADU addition from the addition itself. And that's just because the, the planning commission can't review those. But again, that's something that we are seeing an increase of, is people coming in, they say, we want to build an ADU, we'll live in the ADU while our house is being renovated.
I would add, in terms of thinking this through, just as, as Director Meisner was pointing out before about a possible solution would be to limit the size of an attached, I think if you, if you were to, just, I'm putting myself in the shoes of somebody who is thinking of doing an addition and wants the easiest route, say. And I'm going to call it an ADU, you know, in the hopes that I somehow can make it easier on myself to get through the process. What you have is potentially a smaller unit, if there are limits put on it, and also with the addition of a kitchen, suddenly, something that looked like it could be a moneymaker for me before, has some serious limitations on it now. And so that would definitely temper, I think, somebody's desire to build a unit, you know, an income-generating unit, or whatever they were planning on building, because it would be limiting it. So, so I would say, you know, it might be that we have a basket of, of kind of conditions, you know, look, like you said, on size as well.
And that's a good point. I think there is, there are some practicalities to the cost implications of adding a second-story into a home, and making sure that you have the, the load, the value of the underlying structure to support that second, that second floor. And as Elisa was saying, then, you know, if, if you have a limitation on size, it may, it may not be worth it, right? I don't know, unless the rent over time makes it pencil out. So we will give that some very serious consideration and thought, and perhaps, maybe there is, we can be more clear on how we treat, you know, the detached versus the attached, and maybe we do have a couple set of standards, I don't know, we'll think about it. But I think what I'm hearing pretty clearly is the concern about what would happen on that second floor as it relates to privacy, and architectural look, and a whole host of things, that right now, anybody, anybody wants to do a single, a second-story addition to their home, they're before the planning commission, we look at all those factors. So maybe looking at, through that lens, of how we would approach just a traditional second-story addition, how do we put that on to this, this process?
It, I mean, the secondary unit ADU requires a total fire-separated entrance, right? I mean, I would imagine, you know, from a design perspective, and try to make that flow appropriately, that ADU to be on a second-story addition, making sort of a fire-rated entry to the second-story units, without changing much of the single-family home to begin with, is going to be relatively difficult, right? Just the access from the design perspective. You know, so I think that would sort of put a lot of pressure on the design and sway it away, some of those concerns. Right?
Your comment was causing more conversation about whether or not there needs to be that-
Oh, good.
Can there be an internal entrance inside the house, or does it have to be external? And so there's some, we'd need to do a little bit of a deeper dive on that, on that issue.
When I read this, it said a completely separate entrance, I thought I read that, which didn't sound like you walk in to the same door and then go find another door. It sounds like you have one door.
The primary house, so.
I would imagine you could walk through one door, and then it opens into two doors.
But, okay.
It could be.
Maybe. But I mean, they really, you can't go into the other one's house, you can't go in a hallway or anything and then find your door. If, if, okay, a foyer, perhaps.
You could go into a lobby.
Right, a lobby or foyer.
A lobby, the foyer.
With two doors.
That, exactly.
That would work, okay, but-
Instead of stair that goes up, and then instead of, you know, door that goes to-
And then go around, right.
Which a lot of people are taking away, leaving on.
I mean, the ADU is going to have to be built to building codes and two ways to get in and out, I guess.
But there had to be-
Although we had that conversation, that a house doesn't have to have an in and an out.
I mean, the ADU had to have a separate entrance and exit, right? It has to meet fire, fire-eaggrass, right? That, that set of stair that goes to either one of them has to be, you know, one or two fire-rated, whatever that building requirement is.
I always thought everybody had to have a front door and a back door, and you said we didn't have to do that.
No, back door's never required.
I mean, in every house, I'm seeing has a front door and a back door.
But as far as height limit goes, you know, if it's a separate ADU, separate structured ADU, we should put a cap on that limit, on that, on that roof line.
Yeah.
So right now, if it's a flat roof, the for a single-family home is 25, for pitch roof is 30, you know, so something like maybe half of that?
Yeah, so one of the considerations there is, a lot of times municipalities will look at 14 feet as sort of a limitation on a single story. Otherwise, you start to get to enough height where you're starting able to get lofts and mezzanines and, you know, second stories within the envelope of the height. So I think if, if your intent is to make these single-story units, then probably keeping it at around 14 feet is probably advisable.
I mean, you can also put a limitation in terms of the, the roof joints, the plate-
Right.
Where the ceiling is.
You can do that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways in which-
What would you suggest on that?
I mean, the 14 feet sounds good, right? And then also limit the, the ceiling joists, the bottom of the ceiling joists to be no more than, say, nine feet from finished floor, 10 feet from finished floor, just to be generous.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe a little bit higher, just because if they're small, a little bit, a little bit higher, but, yeah.
A little latitude on the height-
Right.
On the interior space.
Okay, yeah. But not so much that, like you say, all of a sudden there's a loft up there, right?
With a window?
One more person, here's your space, right here.
Any, any other discussion on height limits? Seeing none?
I like, yeah.
Next step, timeline.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I see something about noticing neighbors or not noticing neighbors?
As part of the ministerial process, we do not notice adjacent neighbors.
So if you see somebody just coming in and building, you can't ask a question? I mean, you know, people-
They get scared.
I mean, you know, if things are happening like that.
I think, sorry, I think that might go back to some of the things about, you know, permitting and how transparent we are, right? In terms of, let's say your neighbor's building up, you hear jackhammer running, you hear, you know, framing gun going up-
Yeah.
Right, do you know that there's a permit for that addition or work, right? Sort of the transparency of how our permit application process, and everything else sort of, you know, answer that question.
Would that be in, would those be in a permit process also?
Would what be in the permit process?
Well, after you approve it, yes, they have a permit. So I guess if somebody hears something, I guess they'll call you up and say, what's going on?
So two things, right? So one, anytime the, the ministerial process first requires that they file the plan check application, so that would be a process where before it even gets to construction, we can make the public aware that something is happening.
You do that, if you don't?
Right, so that's a great point. So I think I've heard from a number of commissioners in the past, and I know I've heard it from council, I've heard it from the city manager, and we're going to start really weighing in heavily on this, is how we start to get information out to the public, how we retool our website, how we create lists of, like, we have the short-term rental list that's out there that we have to update from time to time. I'm going to give you all, this is a nice little segue, list of projects that are in- I'm gonna give you all, this is a nice little segue, list of projects that are in the pipeline. So how we can be more of an outward-facing department to make sure that the public is able to find information that they need about what's happening in their neighborhood. Hopefully, we can lead up to taking these databases and then put them on maps, so you could have an interactive map where you could go and look and see what's going on, see what the permit number is, see who the staff contact is. So this is on my wish list for trying to get us more automated, a more automated department. So that's one way. The other way is if the commission really would like to see some sort of public notification process of when a permit is issued or a plan check is made, if the state allows for us to do that, we could certainly come up with a mechanism for that as well.
And it's not just us to know, but, you know, the public to know.
But if you did hear jackhammers next door, you can always call the city and ask if there's a permit, whether it's an ADU or anybody just throwing up a deck or anything else.
Sometimes very hesitant to call.
Well, we got a lot...
People should be scared to call the city.
Yeah.
And I think the goal of, you know, going forward with more transparency in our permitting process is to try to eliminate these calls, so people can look them up themselves.
Yeah.
So, I mean, since these are public information anyway, they should really be made public.
My attitude is that it's always better to be, out of a bunch of caution, it's always better to overnotice. So, and it's the best practice, right? So if we can let the public know about what's happening in their neighborhood, then we're gonna go through any process we can to make that happen. So we'll take a look at the state law. If it doesn't prohibit us, then there's no problem with having a requirement that upon application or building permit, a notification is sent out to immediately adjacent neighbors.
Especially in a single-family residence area, and people aren't used to ADUs yet, you know, and they're gonna have questions about it. Even though you're gonna do this outreach, it'll be interesting to see how many people really hear it or read it, and it may just call a lot of concerns as they see, you know, things happening. All of a sudden, here comes a truck with all this lumber, and then they haven't been noticed. So it's gonna be a little education process.
What would be the difference between, you know, a construction of an ADU or addition of an ADU versus just a regular addition that does not require Planning Commission hearing?
Yeah. Well, I, there was something up the street for me, but, you know, I saw stuff and I started asking questions, and I called city and found out what was happening, because you just kind of curiosity and kind of wonder what's happening in your neighborhood. But, yeah, because it was a small addition, it didn't have to be noticed, but yet, there's always that concern when you see all this stuff happening.
Yeah. And again, just, we recognize that as well, and, you know, that stands for a lot of different types of things, you know? A new business could pop up because it went, it's permitted by right, it gets a business license, and it never came before Planning Commission. So I think we're thinking about how do we get those types of actions out where people can find out what's going on in the community.
So Planning Commission actions?
None tonight.
Yes, that's it. I mean, certainly the commission would like to recommend the staff to run the more sub- session, just like what you already had planned out. I think, you know, the staff has done a great job, but I'd like to thank the staff for putting together this really good package. It's a great start. They put a lot of time and work into it, and we appreciated it. We look forward to these inputs from our community on these outreach programs.
I'm just gonna go ahead and read the flyer, since we were very vague in the beginning about, oh, they've been late August and early September. The first one is Tuesday, August 27th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. in the Jacuti Room. The next one is Saturday, September 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the library in the Room A. And the last one is on a Tuesday, September 10th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the library, Room A, again. So you've got an evening, a weekend, and in the middle of the day to choose from. And as staff said, it's the same meeting, just find the one that's most convenient for you.
And will you be doing like a presentation like today? Or is it just an open house?
So it's not gonna be nearly as involved as a presentation today, and, but what we are planning to do is to have the similar categories that you went through and have like sort of dedicated places where people can come, engage with a staff person, and we can inform them about, you know, what this topic has to do with, and then we can get people's feedback. And we're gonna have some exercises where people are able to really engage with city staff on this topic.
Very well. Okay. That's true.
So you, you gonna hand that to us? That fine list at the end when we're all done?
I was, I was just waiting for staff updates.
Yeah, really? We got a little bit more agenda here, don't we?
So that's it for the ADU discussion for today. Round number eight, staff updates.
Okay. So this is what the commission had asked for previously. So what we've done is we've put together a list, and this is something that is going to be on our website if it's not already. We've, oh, it's already on there, thank you, burned up. We've broken it down into large active development projects, so you can take a look at what those descriptions are. And then we also have a list of all the pending design review permits that are in the pipeline. And so this is gonna be very important as we start to do some agenda management and start to bring more items before you. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass that out. And then our intention is to keep that updated and then have that as, just sort of a standing item in your packets at each meeting. And so if you have any questions on any of those given projects, please feel free to give me a call. Well, and we have the contact person for each of the cases on the list, so feel free to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Round number nine, commissioner comments. Anyone who wants to get started?
Just like these guys already said, "Thank you for this, this was fabulous."
Oh, wait.
Commissioner Wong?
I just need one.
Are these the closing comments?
Just commissioner comment, whatever you'd like to say.
Okay. Now, there's been talk about, over at Mills High School, there's been a posting on the board there that there's meeting for teacher housing on Wednesday evening. So anybody interested in hearing the plans from the Millbury, not Millbury, San Mateo Unified School District to hear about the plans for proposed teacher housing on Mills High School property, they should come and voice your opinions for that. There's the, besides the Garden Wine Festival, the day after that, on Labor Day, there'll be a Mid-Autumn Festival by the Millbury Cultural Committee. They're going to have an event there with some booths. If you haven't had enough booths from the Garden Wine Festival, come and join us for the Mid-Autumn Festival, and they'll have a special guest, Martin Yan from Yan Can Cook. So he'll give a presentation on the stage there. Should be a lot of fun, too. It'll be on Broadway, couple blocks in Broadway, in front of 300 and 400 blocks of Broadway, 16 Mile House to the block over. A little bit more intimate, might have, might see more of your neighbors there. I saw in the Daily Journal, San Mateo Daily Journal, there was another proposal for another 120-unit development on the Ogden Drive property. It's near the Nothing Bunt Cakes, just south of Murchison. So another large property development with 120 housing units. We're all interested in the Facebook campus at Burlingame Point. We see all of the construction going on there. It's interesting to drive by. 800,000 square feet, 160-foot-tall property. And then in addition, there's the other major developments in Burlingame, too many numerous to mention. Also, I noticed that on the SF Airport, there's plans for a hotel there also.
Where?
On the San Francisco Airport, there's a plan for an airport hotel, about 11 stories tall. So these, these large developments, like Facebook and Airport, they're building like crazy. They have a lot of revenues and funds and development. You know, I think our city is doing the best we can to chip in to address the housing issues, but, you know, we, you know, don't have the job space and the revenues for these large projects, nor the land space. Our city is very small, it's only, what, two miles across? Two by two or so? So I think the best, you know, we can hope for is, as we look at these accessory dwelling units and all the developments, is, you know, just maintaining a really nice, safe neighborhoods for our community, make it a very enjoyable and safe place for all our residents. I'm not too sure about solving the housing crisis, because again, you know, we're not building 800,000-square-foot Facebook campuses, and we don't have the revenues to support a lot of these projects. And the projects that we do allow, or have been allowed, you know, we get restrictions on the development, such as the Millbury Parking Lot. What is that? The high limit there is, what, 60 feet, is it? Versus Facebook building up to 160 feet. I don't know how they get away with these height restrictions that they impose on our developments. But the other developments don't seem to have some of these restrictions that we have for our developments. It's interesting. So just some notes, put this kind of in a timeline of perspective and things going around in the area.
If we've moved on to announcements...
I think, let's check who, do you like to make any comments?
No, not really. Thank you for what you did. I think I've said it about three times tonight, and this report is great. I just had a question, and I don't know if this commission comment here. We had approved a second story that Lewis, right near Chadbourne, and it's like the house kind of got torn down, and now there has been nothing happening forever. You can maybe check it on me for tomorrow? I mean, I, yeah, I don't want...
Yeah, I will.
Yeah. I just brought it up because I happened to think of it. I go to exercise, and there's been nothing. And then when we talk, I have another one, too, but just kind of a reminder, okay? Because I may forget.
Announcement from anybody?
Yeah. So another community event, the Millbury Community Foundation is hosting a benefit concert. It is Friday, September 27th, at the Cappuccino Little Theater. It will be a live concert with the band called The Riptides, which are a Beach Boys-style band, and apparently they are the party band of the world. So they're gonna be tons of fun. Ticket proceeds go to the Millbury Community Foundation. The Community Foundation gives grants to worthy causes that help our community, and you can go to our website, millbryfoundation.org, to get tickets. Be there or be square, because they are limited.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Very well.
For the Millbury Community Foundation.
Anybody else? We're done, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. That was...